We're live? Okay, thank you. Good evening, Wareham, and welcome to the Select Board meeting of February 20th, 2024. May I have a roll call, please, Mr. Chadwick?
Yes, present tonight is Mr. Bessie, myself, Jared Chadwick, Ms. Whiteside, Mr. Slaven, and Mr. Sullivan. Excuse tonight is Mr. Rich Bowen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Sullivan Derrick, would you say the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from one which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Residents' comments. Residents' comments on non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes, and there will be no more than 10 minutes per meeting. Based on past practice, the Select Board will not respond or comment to any comments. Is there someone in the audience who would like to address this board? Please raise your hand. I see none. We'll move on to announcements. Mr. Slaven?
Good evening, everybody. I'm dressed like this because the wife refuses to turn the heat up past 60. Picking on old people. A couple of things that are important for the town. As you know, we've been working hard to get a light and road redone at Swift Beach, Intersection Road and Marion Road. I was informed a week ago that the Mass DOT, basically District 5, who controls the construction on that road piece that we're doing, because it's under state control, decided that they would like to maybe move the project to 2026 or even 2027. So for the last week, I've been doing the best that I can with Surf itself. In our MPO meeting this afternoon, we were able to get them to compromise back to doing the project in 2025. Not happy, but it's the best I could do. And if it was 2027, it would be a real problem. For those people who don't know, Damian's pantry opened up, I believe, on Monday. Had something like 183 people stopping to get food. Plus Littleton Drive coming, it's got another 100-plus cars in the area. So we'll keep fighting for it, but at this point here, I don't believe the light in the intersection will be done to sometime in the fiscal year 2025. The Wee Weanic Bridge, there's a Marion Wareham hearing. If you give me a second, I'll pull it up. Okay. Nothing like printing, I can't see. It's a webinar, it's on February 28th. It is at 6 o'clock PM. The webinar ID number, for those who are interested, is let's see, 833-8778-3126. You can submit questions, or you can basically raise your hand to join in as well. This will be a project which we have two bridges that go over the Wee Weanic. I know Mr. Sullivan wanted the bridge raised a little bit to make it easier for boats to go underneath, but that would cause a problem. When you raise a bridge up, it means you have to start it and end it farther down the road. And at that point there, you would end up with the road to Briarwood being blocked, among other things. So I don't think that's going to happen that way. And the other piece we have-
Can we just, we will post that webinar information on the town website tomorrow, please, Mr. Sullivan? We'll send it to you in an email, okay?
Yeah, if I could get it, then we could post it. That's what I was just going to suggest.
If Mr. Slaven will send it to you and we can get it posted. Thanks so much. I'm sorry, Mr. Slaven, go ahead.
And the last piece is, I've got several phone calls, and I have no idea whether it's true or not, that they claiming that they've contacted Dakota Partners, the Willen Cove, and there's some question about Phase 1 building, what's happening with it. And there's just different rumors going on. There was a meeting today with the Affordable Housing Trust, and the person from Willen Cove there really wasn't able to answer any question, but the reporter for Wareham Week is going to look into the the issues that were mentioned because people are not getting an answer about availability. And that's enough for today.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
No, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chadwick? Mr. Chadwick, we can't hear you.
He's muted.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yes, I have one, just me being a fire geek. Wareham Fire Department just took delivery of their new Engine 5, which is a Rosenbauer Commander pumper. So you guys will be seeing that out and about, and I believe onset fires also in the process of ordering one of those as well. Also, Wareham Fire Department has a new order for a what is called a BRAT, and it is a brush rapid attack truck. And that's for brush fires to get them out faster. That's basically it.
Thank you. I went to a fundraiser at Stone Path, excuse me, over the weekend for a new 501(c)(3) called Fishing for the Mission. It actually is a nationwide program that offers training for veterans so that they can become captains of fishing vessels, you know, like not, not a Batsea fishing vessel, but it was a really interesting program, and there was a chowder cook-off, and the Bourne Fire Department won the chowder cook-off, which was kind of neat. And I do have one other announcement. I sent all of you information about the open meeting law complaints, which were filed on February 14th, and with an amendment for it to today from Brenda Ekstrom regarding the Select Board as well as the Bylaw Review Committee. I have answered the open meeting law complaint. You will be getting a copy of that today in the mail, and I will read you what it says. Hang on one second. Essentially, it says, "We have reviewed your complaint, and we find no basis for the complaint in it being an open meeting law violation." That has been sent to the Attorney General's office. I can read it exactly. "Dear Ms. Ekstrom, I have carefully reviewed the allegations that you state in your complaint of February 14th and its amendment of today, February 20th. None of your allegations present open meeting law issues, notwithstanding your characterization that the open meeting law has been violated. Very truly yours." Copy of that has been sent to all of you, Mr. Bowen, the town clerk, and the attorney general. So that matter has been put to bed. I have no further announcements, so we will move on. Mr. Chadwick? I'll accept a motion on A. Mr. Wolverton was in with us last week, so I'll just accept a motion, please. You're muted, Mr. Chadwick.
It keeps muting it by itself. I don't know why.
It's-
I'm muted.
You muted me? Okay. All right, I move to appoint Rich Wolverton as a member to the Library Board of Trustees with a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve or to appoint him. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself. Yes, 400. I do not see William McCoy here. Mr. McCoy, if you are here, please raise your hand. Otherwise, we will move on. There are no licenses and permits. Mr. Foster, would you raise your hand, please? We have before us on the agenda, we will skip over that, we'll put it on a future agenda. We don't have a recommend, we have a recommendation, but the individual isn't with us. So we have a discussion and possible vote on approximately $3 million of Swift Beach sewer line bonds. And Mr. Foster, when he appears, will explain to us what it is that we're looking at, and Mr. Chadwick is prepared to read.
Madam Chairperson, I know he was, he was having an issue. He said it stopped, but Alan was speaking, he couldn't, couldn't quite, he couldn't hear anymore. So I'm just checking to see if he's-
Okay, if he, we know exactly what it is. We have all of the documents. It is a $3 million bond over several years total with different maturity dates. And the documentation has been reviewed by Bond Counsel and prepared by Bond Counsel. And what Mr. Chadwick needs to do is to read into the record the, ah, the formal vote from the Select Board, but there's Mr. Foster, so maybe he can join. I'm not sure.
I would just continue on with your progress. It's worked on.
All right, Mr. Chadwick, could you start in three? Thank you so much.
Yes. Vote of the Select Board. I, the clerk of the Select Board of the Town of Wareham, Massachusetts, certify that at a meeting of the Board held February 20th, 2024, of which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified, and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, of which appear upon the official record of the Board in my custody, voted that the sale of the $2,825,000 general obligation sewer bonds of 2024 of the town dated February 28th, 2024 to Fidelity Capital Markets, a Division of National Financial Service LLC, at the price of $3,062,564.72 in accrued interest. If any is hereby approved and confirmed, the bonds shall be payable on August 1st of the years and in principal amounts and bear interest in the respective rates as follows. Year 2024 through 2028, $145,000 at 5%. 2029 to 2033, $140,000 at 5%. Year 2034 through 2043, $140,000 at 4%.
And I will just say that each one of those years, 2024 through 2028, each one of those has, so we're looking at several different iterations. Go ahead, Mr. Chadwick.
All right. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, preparation, distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated February 6, 2024, and a final official statement dated February 13, 2024, each in such form as may be approved by the Town Treasurer, be and hereby ratified, confirmed, and approved, adopted. Further voted that the bond shall be subject to redemption at the option of town, of the town, such, upon such terms and conditions are set forth in the official statement. Further voted that the Town Treasurer and the Select Board be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(2-12) in such form as may be approved by Bond Counsel of the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the Town Treasurer to establish post issuance federal tax compliance procedures and continuing disclosure procedures in such forms as the Town Treasurer and Bond Counsel deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds to comply with the relevant securities laws. Further voted that any certificates or documents related to the bonds may be executed in several counterparts, each of which shall be regards, in regards as an original, and all of which shall constitute one and the same document's delivery of any executed counterpart of a signature date to a document by electronic mail in a PDF file or by other electronic transmission shall be as effective as delivery of a manual executed counterpart signature page to such document and electronic signatures on any of the documents shall be deemed original signatures for the purpose of the documents and all matters related thereto, having the same legal effect as original signatures. And further voted that each member of the Select Board, the Town Clerk, the Town Accountant, and the Town Treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them or any of them, to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the mark, for the meeting, which, uh, generally include the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the Town Clerk and a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on municipal building that the Office of the Town Clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with an alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 CMR 29.032B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting, and remaining so posted at the time of the meeting that no deliberation or decision in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 30A 18-25 as amended, dated February 20, 2024.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. These are, again, a series of bonds for the Swift Speech Program, which has, I guess, been completed. I want to thank Mr. Foster, as always, for his due diligence in getting really pretty good bond rates. So there is, Mr. Sullivan, do you want to jump in and say anything additional before we call for the vote?
Yeah, I'd like to, actually, I'd like to thank everybody for the, for the guidance and their help over the years that has helped us achieve the AA+ bond rating. It is the highest rating we've ever had, as you know, and they, this is, we got it before. You know, it's AAA is obviously the best, but the, speak with them, it's based off of one of the things we know is an issue, as we'll get into the budget later, is our residents' ability to pay is, and so we understand that, but, you know, it's it's really, it's a high compliment to us. And I wanted to just take a second to read off of portions. I'm going through all these. I have too many documents tonight, but the-
Can I just call for the vote, and then I'll let you come back in?
Yeah.
Okay. May, any further discussion? I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, it is so. Go ahead, Mr. Sullivan.
So they said, "The rating reflects our opinion of Wareham's strong management with good financial management practices and policies under financial management assessment methodology, specifically its focus on long-term planning, including capital, and regularly monitoring the budget performance and investments, and strong institutional framework score. Consistent financial performance due to reliable revenue and a conservative budgeting approach supporting reserve growth and low debt relative to market value with plans for some additional borrowing and manageable carrying costs with potentially increasing retirement expenses." So this is part of the whole management team, which is yourselves, the Finance Committee, you know, obviously, Mr. Mr. Foster and everyone. So it's a high compliment to this town, and it's something I'm very proud of that we've been able to achieve.
Thank you. As a retired banker, I assure you that this rating impacts our ability to borrow as well as the cost of our borrowing, and it is a, a really magnificent accomplishment that Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Foster, and his teams have been able to main, to have the AA+ bond rating. It's just plain spectacular. Okay, let's move on. Thank you, Mr. Foster. Sorry, we couldn't hear from you, but the documents you require will be available to probably Thursday morning, sir. Okay? Mr. Chadwick, I'll go for a motion on item B, please.
Yes, I move to approve the conf, uh, confatory vote, previously voted under 48-hour business on 12324 to approve the supporting the Trails Grant application for Wareham Land Trust property on Main Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to confirm the vote previously taken under 48-hour business. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. As far as 00, Mr. Bessie, I mean, Mr. Chadwick, I'm sorry, item C?
Yep, I move to accept a donation for $20,000 from the Wareham Free Library to put into the layer, Library Foundation gift account. Oh, my God.
Second.
No. That's, that's wrong.
It can't be right, is it?
No, it's wrong. So it's the gift from the Library Foundation gift account to the Wareham Library. Can you say it again, please, Mr. Mr. Chadwick?
Yeah, it's, uh, yeah. All right, I move to accept a donation for $20,000 from the Library Foundation gift account to the Wareham Free Library.
Is there a second to that motion? Motion made and seconded to accept the gift. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. It is so. Mr. Chadwick will accept a motion on the smelt closing?
Yep, I move to continue of the closure of the smelt in the Wee Weanic River.
Harvesting by net, that needs to be specific, please.
Harvesting by net.
Is there a second to that motion?
Needs to be five years also.
Yes, for a five-
Five years as well.
Yeah. Is there a second to that motion?
No second.
Motion made and seconded. This is a recommendation from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts having to do with the smelt fishery. It was a fishery that was in trouble, and therefore the Commonwealth did shut it, recommended shutting it down, and all of the smelt rivers, of which we have a couple. Mr. Slaven?
Do we know whether our harbor master has the ability to enforce that?
Yes, then he has, he has forwarded this, and he is asking us to do it, please.
Okay, well, I need to know.
Yep. Any further discussion? Go for a roll call vote, Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick, oh, Mr. Chadwick, I'm going to ask you to go to 11 for the documents, which are the minutes, please, sir.
Yep, uh, to do, to do, all right, I move to approve the meeting minutes for 12324 and 2624.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve those. Any further discussion on those? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Chadwick, the next one, please.
Yep. I move to approve the meeting, executive meeting minutes for 2624. Move and release with the correction that Mr. Chadwick, myself, was present the entire meeting.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve and release those minutes. Any further discussion? Mr. Slaven, do you have a question, sir?
No, I'm just, usually on executive minutes, we hold until it's, you know, double-checked by Town Council.
I have run it by Town Council because the item that we need to discuss is on the agenda.
Okay, never mind.
Got it. Thanks so much. Any further discussion on the motion to approve and hold and release? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Mr. Chadwick will accept a motion on 8E.
I move to execute the employment agreement between the Town of Wareham and a Mr. Derek D. Sullivan.
Second.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded to execute the employment agreement, which was discussed and, and approved in executive session on February 6, 2024. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Mr. Slaven?
Yes.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
Mr. Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Okay, we have no 48-hour business. It's, I'm sure I know one of you would like, no, it's not 48-hour business, Mr. Slaven, I'm sorry.
I tried.
No, no. And I will go to the Town Administrator's Report. Mr. Sullivan, I think you probably have some stuff for us as well as screen sharing, am I right?
Yeah, I have a couple of different things. But first, I want to thank, you know, the Board, obviously, the Select Board, for the opportunity to continue to serve the Town of Wareham. You know, it's been sitting back and having a, a beverage at home the other night, and I was thinking about it. It was August 2012 when I took over as acting, and the amount of support and thanks I need to give to the staff of this town and the residents is, you know, it's immeasurable. And there's, there's some things we've accomplished that's really great over when, when we took over, there was several hundred thousand in free cash certified after a negative free cash year. Today, we certify millions due to the policy, which helps us with our capital, so we can actually fund capital items. There was $400,000 in the stabilization fund. Today, today, we have over four and a half million in OPEB stabilization fund, and we've been putting money into a capital stabilization fund. We worked with the employees to get into the Mayflower and Minnesota Health Group, which I'm now a part of the Steering Committee, after the town raided the trust fund on a boat, boat to, to bridge a budget gap, something that we learned not to do. You know, there's been a lot of good things. We've worked together to get TIF agreements, which resulted in the Marriott Hotel being built, which resulted in Stone Path, which we were earlier, which is one of the best, I think, nonprofit Eric things, because they, they support the community so much. We were able to purchase Little Harbor Golf Course and keep that running as an amenity to our residents. We've redone playgrounds, including Swifts, the Joseph Conway. Oh, shoot, I'm going to call him senior or junior. Claire's going to kill me, but the, you know, we've redone, redone all these basketball courts, the Shangri-La Playground, the new dog park. There's been so much, and it's been because of the support of the residents of this community. And I really appreciate everything that they've done. You've got the new band shell, the new elementary school. Because sometimes I think we get so wrapped up in the day-to-day that we forget to think about, you know, what, what's been achieved and what's been done. So thank you for all your support. Again, thank you to the staff of this town, which are second to none. You know, we, we can't do it without any of them. And thank you to the residents, who, you know, it's my favorite thing is some of the residents that we're starting to change it, where you're hearing them speaking proudly of their community, and that's what really matters. It's a great community. So, thank you. So I'm going to start and go on, see if I can get to the budget presentation here. Start with the- All right, can you see the, the slides?
Yes.
So, and you'll have to excuse me, today, while I was working on updating some of the slides, I, I cleverly changed the format, and I've not been able to get them to look the same, so they're, they're a little hideous, for lack of a better term, so we will fix those. Okay, so you start off with your fiscal 2025 revenues, and how you get there is you start off with last year's levy limit, and you add to that the 2.5% increase. That's Proposition 2.5. That's what everybody's thinking about. It's not on your personal taxes, on your, on your residential home or anything. It's an increase on the levy base. And then we have estimated new growth. This year, we certified new growth very high because of a couple of the solar- This year, we certified new growth very high because a couple of the solar projects actually came online from before. Those have been, uh, the, those are some good revenue generators. So we take an average of them and try and figure out what you're looking at, if there's any big new projects. And we're feeling comfortable with around four hundred and fifty thousand. That brings you then to the debt exclusion. The debt exclusion is not increased by proposition two and a half. It's a, it's an in and an out. Whatever the actual costs are, is what is, uh, is what is assessed through the debt exclusion. Then you get your chapter seventy state aid, who came in really low this year, only a small increase. Uh, charter school reimbursement, we, we send that directly to the schools as well. They were reimbursing higher, although our charter school costs went up, our reimbursement went down. And that's, um, you know, I guess that's, that's the Commonwealth for you. The state aid, general government, uh, they went a little over three percent increase for general government aid. Estimated local receipts, well, I'll go over a layer, we've, um, we've had some positives that, so we've increased, some of them are the, uh, wait, the, uh, the fees from the inspections department, uh, the lo- local, lo- uh, local motor vehicle excise tax. And as well also the, uh, because we have, uh, we have a good general fund balance. Where, while interest costs have gone up for borrowing, they've also gone up for our savings. So we've increased that dramatically, where before you were only getting about a hundred, maybe a hundred and fifty thousand. We are, we're projecting over seven hundred thousand for FY twenty-five, and that is with, uh, considering whether rates stay the same, maybe a little lower. I know we will get more than that this fiscal year. Uh, so seven hundred thousand is a good prudent number. Available funds, that's what we're taking out of the, uh, wetlands funds and some of the harbor service permits and CPA as well for some of their debt. So you don't, you know, we used to vote them separately, but there's no need. You can actually budget some of those. So we took some of the CPA, um, you know, debt payments, and you put them in the budget, and you'll see it as an expense later. Then the enterprise fund direct cost transfer. Uh, I've been going over it. The surcommissioner's not voted that. It's actually closer to over nine hundred thousand, but we've been trying to keep it down. We, it will go over it at another time, but we're not, we're not charging back for a lot of the departments now, so just something we've been, we've been trying to, uh, keep. This has actually gone down from a high of nine hundred and eighteen thousand in the past. So you're looking at about, uh, total estimated revenues, eighty-one million, five hundred thirty-six thousand, fifty-three dollars. Uh, like I said before, this current fiscal year, our state aid came in a little higher. So you'll actually see a bit, a little bit more of a, um, of an expense cost, but that's the way it works out from one fiscal year to another. So again, you take the, the levy limit from one year to another. You can see that's an increase based on last year's new growth and two and a half percent increase. So if you take, uh, when I put my pointer on, can you see my pointer on the screen? No? Okay. Um, so no big deal. You take the two and a half plus the new growth. So if you add, uh, the first, uh, the first three columns, that gives you the first, uh, column under FY twenty-five. So you can see the differences year over year. Again, new growth came in high this year, uh, but you have the debt exclusion doesn't really change too much, uh, state aid and chapter seventy, the charter. Uh, again, about just a little over seventy thousand, general government, a hundred and ten thousand, local receipts, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, and available funds of just negligible, negligible change. So, are there any questions on this portion? So this is, uh, just some of the graphics to help understand where our revenue is coming up from. So when you take the levy limit, the two and a half percent increase, and the school debt exclusion, you're looking at about sixty-four percent of our revenue comes from, uh, from the tax base. Then you take state aid from the school and the general government, and a full twenty-five percent of our revenues come from the Commonwealth. Local receipts are about ten percent, and then the enterprise indirect, direct is right around one percent, and available funds are less than one percent. So that's our revenue. So we start getting to the, to the FY twenty-five expenses. You can see the tuition assessments are just under four point five million. Uh, that's charter school sending and school choice. Retired teachers' health insurance, which is a state assessment, uh, o- over one point six million. All the other assessments, which include GATRA, mosquito control, and a few others are, uh, a little over five hundred thousand. And the overlay is what you put in your budget, because you might have throughout the year, if you have any abatements and such, that's what you use for your overlay. Uh, health and dental insurance is, uh, at about eight point six million. We're not seeing a large increase this year. Uh, and speaking with the, uh, superintendent, there looks like there could be a reduction in force, which would also help reduce the, um, the healthcare costs. Retirement, LUNA, that's the Plymouth County Retirement, plus the Labor's International Union. Our general and workers' comp insurance are about one point three-five million. Medicare, that's the, the, um, also known as FICA, that's the one point four-five percent tax that, uh, people pay on their, their, um, on their salaries, and then we pay the other portion, and that's for them to get into Medicare. Uh, life insurance, veterans' benefits, we also pay for a veteran's service officer and pay benefits to, uh, veterans living in our community that are eligible for them. Our excluded debt, that's school debt. And then you've got the other debt, which is the principal interest and short-term interest. Uh, you know, all of that is actually school debt now, except for about forty, forty thousand of it. So that's going to be the middle school roof. And we have no other, uh, debt within our budget. And, and why I'm saying that is obviously the sewer goes through the enterprise fund, it's not through our general fund budget. Um, this is the community pr- preservation, principal and interest payments, the harbor service principal and interest. That was for the docs over at, uh, over an onset. Then surped assessment, I took the, the prior year, and I think increased it by two and a half percent to get that. We haven't gotten our assessment, but should be right around that area. Uh, school budget, we're, we're projecting a little over a million dollar increase for them uh, to the regular budget. We've not done anything with school transportation, which brings you to about thirty-four million, five hundred and forty-five thousand. On top of that, we have Upper Cape Cod Tech at about three point seven eight million. Large increase this year, we'll go over that later. And that brings us to the total estimated expenses of the eighty-one million, five hundred and thirty-six thousand. So general government year over year, uh, we're looking at, uh, just under a hundred thousand dollar increase. General government is. So this is a bit of a long list, so excuse me, that's the you've got the selectman's office, town administrator's office, finance committee expenses, the reserve fund, the town accountant, audit, the assessing department, the treasurer collector's office, general services, which is the, the mail machine and, uh, mailing and, um, the, uh, the postal, plus all the printing over by your office, the, um, legal services, personnel services, information management technology, um, information management technology, communications, town clerk, elections, registrations, planning, community development, sick leave bonus, and there was, uh, the, uh, and that finishes it off. So all that fits in that first category. That's, uh, pretty much the essence of your general government. Public safety is police, inspectional services, and the Division of Natural Resources, uh, education, and Upper Cape Cod Tech, self-explanatory. Public Works is municipal maintenance, streetlights and snow and ice. Um, Health and Human Services, uh, that's including the Board of Health and, uh, some of the other departments, uh, Cultural and Recreation is the library, so. Debt service, you know, again, self-explanatory, state aids, uh, state aid and assessments, and the employee benefits, and general insurance and the overlay. So you see our biggest increase are education and then the, uh, employee benefits, and then the state aid, state assessments, which are also mostly the educational assessments. So, uh, you know, about two and a half percent to general government, a little over four percent public safety, well, a little over four percent for education, including Upper Cape Cod Tech, the public works, the Health and Human Services, again, um, you know, so the only change that you'd really see employment-wise on the general government side is in personnel services, we're making the floater from part-time to full-time, which has been absolutely necessary. Especially with, uh, when, when we have low staffing, plus having long-term outages, it has been a miracle. And we're supporting the council on aging, trying to get another, uh, uh, the, sort of a, a clerical level in there, which has been, uh, which is something that's desperately needed, and that's what we're looking at for any sort of changes on the town side, which would be plus or minus, uh, inspectional services, we are revamping it to be concentrating more on code enforcement and looking to have a more full-time, uh, you know, code enforcement going from ten hours to thirty-two hours, which then would reduce the clerical division down, um, down some hours. And in the treasurer collector's office, Mister Foster, who's been a stalwart of this town, and when times are tough, he's probably one of the, one of the one key people to get us through it. He will be retiring within the next year. Uh, that department's really two departments. You've got, you've got the treasurer's department and the collector's department. So we, we're upgrading two positions to bookkeeper positions and, uh, moving more of a part-time role. A lot of the stuff we've been traditionally, people have been coming to the windows for, they're now doing online, which has been great, which allows us to sort of restructure, to look at, uh, you know, other ways to handle business. And then we're looking at, um, at, uh, the planning office and how we can make that with, uh, Mister Buckland's retired ma- retirement, maybe a more efficient office and, uh, helping the boards and committees out more. So, um, this is the, uh, the dollar bill where you see sort of where your dollars go. Again, this, uh, the yellow is, uh, it, these colors are awful, so I'll try and get them back to the more neutral ones that we see. Uh, but I think this is a good way of looking at at where your, where your money goes. You can see the school, and then our, our, uh, school and town employee benefits, public safety, state and county assessments, you know, Upper Cape Cod Tech and Public Works, then general government, then the new school debt, our debt service, which is, you know, school-related, and then Health and Human Services and Culture and Recreation. So it's gives you a good idea of where, you know, people always ask, where do my dollars go? And I think this is a, this is a fair representation. So doing it as a, uh, as a pie chart as well, um, I don't think we, I need to run through these, but I think it shows it again of where, you know, where our priorities have been. I know that, uh, when I came on board, we'd we'd gone from a year when we'd been under minimum net school spending and hovering right around, uh, you know, between ninety-eight and a hundred and four percent, and today we're hovering between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and thirty-one percent. So, you know, we understand the importance, and I think we've, we've provided a lot for the community educational-wise. And that's where I wanted to get down to. This is something new that I've been going through, trying to, trying to, to figure out. This is our educational costs in the FY twenty-five budget. The first, uh, column is the FY twenty-four, then you have the FY twenty-five. And then that's sort of the difference. So I know we said that the school's budget itself is getting a little over a, uh, a million, uh, a million dollars. But then you also, you see what's going on with the, um, debt exclusion. I just won't run through those again. Like I said, it's a new slide. Um, Plymouth County Retirement, they're actually, although you'd see there, the, the teachers have a different retirement, Plymouth County Retirement are all the non, uh, non-teaching units within the school department, and right now they represent fifty-six percent of the retirement cost for the town. Um, that's our portion of general liability insurance. FICA, again, the retired teachers' health. So school choice sending, you know, small choo- small increase, but then the charter school sending, a larger increase and Upper Cape Cod Tech. So we are dedicating about eighty percent of the budget increase this year to education. That state aid, this is a ten-year review on it. If you see, we'd had, uh, a little over twelve million in twenty fifteen, and it basically declined our state level for for the next eight years. Last year, we had a big jump, and then this year a decline. And you, you sort of wonder, was the big jump, uh, just making a splash from the, uh, you know, from the, from the, the, you know, the new things in the Commonwealth, but, uh, I don't think we'll be seeing any large splashes again. Uh, you know, part of it is that, that, uh, fair share, AKA millionaire's tax, was, uh, they, they've done the part on the, the roads, um, putting about a hundred million, which, you know, it should be helpful. But this was, our understanding was this would be going towards education, which I think we all think of as DESI, you know, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. A good portion of it is going to tuition for community colleges, which is great, but you know, we always talk about the, the foundation. We need to make sure that the foundation of this, of the Commonwealth is fixed, and that's the elementary schools and the, uh, you know, secondary education of the, of the Commonwealth. And that's where the money needs to go to be able to fix the next level. So I know it was certainly disheartening to the school committee to see that they were not getting more, more funds out of it. School assessments, this is the same ten-year view. They were about one point two million. And they've just skyrocketed over the years to over four and a half million. So this is, um, hi, hi there, could you, I'm doing a budget presentation, if you don't mind. Yeah, no, thank you. Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Uh, my friends, uh, friends come in. So the, uh, so when you're looking at this, you can see that's where a lot of money is going. Um, you know, we, we were relatively low and it was, it was pretty stable, and it's anecdotal, but I've always thought, when the override failed, it's when we first started seeing the real spike in school choice and and going out of town, because I think it was sort of what you call the parade of horribles. They were told all these bad things going to happen, and folks said, well, I can send my children elsewhere if the schools are going to be, if it's going to be tough. And that's really what I think has happened. Plus, you see some of the charter schools have opened up, like Rising Tide. Um, so, you know, definitely a big cost increase to the, to the town. And this is monies that we are being assessed, so it's real money that we're paying out, or if you will, reduction in our aid. So while it's not going down Viking Drive, it is going for the education of students from the, from this town. Upper Cape Cod Tech, you know, we, uh, we start off in FY fourteen, you had a decline going up to about three point seven million twenty-one. We saw another decline and, uh, jumped back up today. So, and that's really enrollment based. So Upper Cape Cod Tech, you know, they, they get a couple, three, four percent increase, but it's usually, it's the enrollment that's the biggest factor. And then this comes to our tax bills, which are very sensitive, I understand that, so you know, the way to look at, because people talk about tax rate. Tax rate's not what you look at, because you can have a community like Chatham, where the, you know, the average, uh, home is assessed at over a million and a half, like, dollars, they're going to have a low tax rate. Ours is nine dollars, which is not, you know, nine, so isn't high. But you need to understand, it's the average single-family tax bill by a community that matters. And then listening to the residents, they say, well, we pay the fire taxes on top of it. So you think this is a good way to show what you're looking at? The first one is the tax bill from, for Wareham. That's for our school, general government, et cetera. The second one is the Wareham tax bill with Wareham Fire included. The third one is the Wareham tax bill with onset fire, which is a little, little higher than Wareham, uh, The third one is the Wareham tax bill with onset fire, which is a little, little higher than Wareham uh. Fire tax bill. So then you start going to the other communities in our area, Thelma. You know, so again, we're at under four thousand for just Wareham, about forty seven hundred for. Wareham with the, the Wareham Fire District, a little over forty nine hundred for uh. Wareham with the onset fire district. Then Thelma is fifty five hundred, Born fifty seven hundred. Lakeville fifty eight hundred, Rochester sixty four hundred, so forth, so on to Matapoisette at seventy four hundred. Does this make sense to everybody? Taking a look at it? So why does that matter? You know, hey, we're only a couple hundred bucks off of Thelma or, or Born. Well, this is why it matters. I take the average single family tax bill of Born. And then the Wareham one with onset fire, so considering that the highest. Right? That's our, that's our, so that includes. Everything, including the fire, where, uh, the onset fire district. So our difference is about uh, seven hundred and sixty one dollars from Born, you know. Five hundred and seventy four dollars from, from Thelma and uh, going through the eighteen hundred Carver, all the way up to twenty four hundred from Matapoisette. But why does it matter? I take the single family parcels. And again, this is just sort of a, this is a rough, we're not including anything else. But if we're the same, we'd be looking at over seven million. Revenue more, if we had the similar uh, tax bills born. Over seventeen point six million is carved. Over five point four is found that. Lakeville eight point one, Matapoisette over twenty three million. Middleborough fourteen point seven million. Plymouth over twenty million, Rochester fourteen.
Mr. Sullivan, I'm going to ask you to explain this one again. I think this is a really important. Page for people in the audience to understand, I'm. It caught, I, I had to listen to you. After you started, you know what I'm saying? I would like you to explain it to me again, let's put it that way.
So we're going to take, we're going to take the Born column. And that is the Born's average single family tax bill, which is five thousand seven hundred eleven dollars. Then you have the Wareham tax bill, so that's our general government. Police, our uh, our school added with the onset fire district tax in there. Alright, so that's, that's all encompassing of the uh. Of the, of the, you know, the services, if you will. So you're looking at a difference of seven hundred and sixty one dollars. Alright, so you say. Seven hundred and sixty one dollars, hey, that doesn't seem like that much. Well, Wareham has the, the single family parcels, nine thousand four hundred and eighty nine of those. So if you take the difference in the tax bill, every single family tax bill of our two communities. And then the number of parcels and multiply them, that's where you're looking at is the seven million, seven point two million dollars.
Thank you.
So, you know, that's um. That's really what, what we were looking at, so.
Thank you.
I have the uh. Alright, my. Someone shrunk my screen down on me. Am I still uh, sharing?
Yep.
Alright, well. I don't know what I did, hold on. Every time I keep on. Okay, my screen sharing control disappears here.
Nevermind.
No, I don't want to make webinar. Alright, well, what is, that's uh. That was uh, the first phase of the budget. We can go over the um. The, the rest of it in the Excel format if you, if you want, or the PDF format. But that was the, sort of the overall of the budget. Did you have any specific questions? While I work on my tech?
No.
Hey, bud.
No.
No. Um, alright, yeah, I'm, we've got dead air here Judy, I can't, I can't click to another link or anything, so.
Okay, alright. Um, if you want to talk your way through. Well, your next presentations would be the more specific line items on this, right?
Yeah, so.
Okay. So. This balance, this budget that you have presented here is a balanced budget, is that correct?
Yeah, what I've done is balance the budget. Try and make sure that we have uh, the revenues and expenses, they link up. And uh, it's providing for the, the services. We understand it's not what every department needs. Uh, to get, to get anywhere, it's not even like you said, level service. Really budget, it's just keeping things sort of uh, moving forward.
Mr. Bessie, Mr. Chadwick, Mr. Slaven, any questions for Mr. Sullivan? No.
No, I think the uh. The presentation, especially on the school side, when Derek and I basically came in the same time. We uh, the DESI complaint from the school was we were under the DESI budget by, I think was two percent. And today, in actual dollars, I believe were eight point two million dollars over the DESI. You know, guideline. Uh, and I think with the opera money, the cares money and the. Estra money that came in since twenty nineteen, in particular twenty eighteen. Uh, we basically had money come in. And unfortunately. That money doesn't last very long, it doesn't exist now. And it's one of the reasons why I believe the school department has the. Uh, what I call structural deficit, it has to deal with right now. And I hope people understand that. You know, the old fram. You know, commercial pay me now, pay me later. When you have issues like a structural deficit, you need to fix it before it's too late. And I feel afraid at this point we have an issue. I don't believe the town can simply bail out the school department this time. That's it.
Thank you.
So, yeah, just uh, I actually um, did a little bit of research with uh, some help from Mr. Forget. Uh, for those wondering, um, I know it's been brought up before. Uh, upper Cape Tech, um, how many students we actually have in that school? Uh, two hundred and sixty three. Students from Wareham attend upper Cape Tech. That's uh, seventy seven in ninth grade, seventy one in tenth grade. Fifty seven in eleventh grade and fifty eight in twelfth grade.
Yep.
Mr. Bessie, that, um, those two documents that you picked up in the office today that showed the average. You know, the DESI requirements for each of the school systems, then the ones that contribute to upper Cape, do you have that with you by any chance?
I do not have it with me, but if you give me a second, I can grab it.
I think it's important for people to understand.
Sure, give me one second.
If you don't mind. Mr. Sullivan, why don't you keep going if you have any further things to say?
Yeah, it's just. So when I share, it's actually showing me what I see there now, okay? So this is just sort of the level, the detail, this is the one that we bring, you'll see the column on the right being voted on by. Town meeting, see the, you know, the differences between the FY twenty three is what we actually expended. FY twenty four is updated with any uh. State aid decreases, increases, assessment increases, decreases. So again, we're show, projecting a uh, a slight in, um, a slight surplus for this year, which is, which is good. But really, the only major changes you'll see is uh. Within our own departments is you'll see the, the planning department actually go down a little bit in uh. In uh, salaries and it's, 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 the page break is awful, so it's between two and four. But you'll see it going down to two seventy nine, that's because of the change in the format that we're looking at doing. You know, we're trying to get in a, you know, somebody that can help with the boards and committees and then somebody to sort of do. More of the economic development work. I know there was some concern about having the same one there. And then we increased some expenses to try and help have some uh, some outside sources for them as well. You know, police, just a moderate increase, and again, outside of. Percentage wise, believe it or not, the biggest increase is council on aging with that uh, that position. So I think that's really important. We've been working to bring that back, working to bring the library back. And a lot of good hard work from folks. So you'll often see, um. For example, it looks like there is a big jump between the police for twenty three and twenty four. While there was a, was an increase, they actually turned back some money because they had had some retirement, some laterals out. And being in civil service, you can't instantly fill those positions. And uh, laterals aren't always the best way. Uh, I remember the old chief Wallsec would say. Hire hard to manage easy, so sometimes you try and get people and uh, get them through the academy and train them the way that uh, you know, Wareham does things. So, you know, really, the big thing you'll see too is on the debt. The middle school debt is going to be, um. What I'm going to propose to you is to make this budget. They completed the first phase of the middle school roof, right? You remember we split up in two phases? That was just under a million dollars. Like to pay that off with free cash rather than borrowing it. We have the availability. And instead of borrowing it over the ten years, that will save us uh, you know, between interest and such, a little over two hundred thousand in the uh. In our debt service. So you'll see that debt principal is going down, but there'll be a severe increase to the debt short term interest. Because when they start building out the second phase of the school, we're going to be temporarily borrowing. And uh, we'll be paying short term interest and then it'll be permanently financed thereafter. So we need to make sure, because looking at the uh, debt service line. Uh, we need to make sure we have at least seven hundred thousand going into that for uh. For FY twenty six, or you, we will not have the ability to pay for our debt. You know, so that we cannot play around with that. You know, the big, big increase, we saw the pension retirement contribution going from five point six to six point one two nine under employee benefits. Uh, big jump for that, we know we're going to see a big jump. They did not, if you remember that three hundred uh. The three hundred dollar increase for the retirees. They did not hit us with that full impact for twenty five, so we know we'll get some more in twenty six. But we're looking at fully funding this by FY twenty nine. And the boards voted to put the change that allocation to uh, OPEB. At that time, but that's going to be an opportunity for us to really look at. When that happens, um, you know, if we're, we're all still here. What to do for the future, because your assessments are going to go up to probably in the eight, nine million dollar range and then go down to three. Three million, and the difference, that I think that's the time when you start planning for that. Is to build the new police station or something like that, because you will have those funds available. Built in within your budget, that, that's the time to make some of those big, big choices, but. We need to start planning for that now, so that everybody has an open, clear and concise idea of what we're doing. You know, the healthcare, like I said, just a small, small increase. I'm, I believe, we're going to be voting for the initial uh, Thursday. For the initial rates for the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. Uh, looking at the trends, we're probably looking at around a four and a half percent increase. Which is much better than some of the other communities that we're hearing about, um. You know, Jared, I think if you're in Cape Cod healthcare, you're not going to be happy for the municipal healthcare. Group, so if they're closer to seven percent increases. Um, so again, this is, I got, what's up?
I said, I use South Coast.
Okay. Yeah, the uh. We're, again, I cannot stress how good it was to work with the uh, the employees to get into the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. That is, we were projecting, we would have been closer to probably nine, ten, eleven million at this one, so it has been excellent work. Uh, and then again, the state and county assessments and then the upper Cape Cod tech, so. You know, it's, again, it's not a budget where, where you're cheering through, we're providing. You know, all this extra stuff, all these things, you know, we're trying to help the COA, we're managing where we are. But it keeps us going and that's been the main thing, keep on moving, keep on going forward and try and figure out alternative ways to generate revenues and. Save costs when you can.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan, I know that you plan to post this on the town website, um, later, either this evening or tomorrow, will be available to the public, am I correct?
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Sullivan? Any comments?
Just do the best we can.
Yeah, we'll send this out, it's uh. Again, it's uh, I appreciate all the help in generating this, the employees, all their hard work. Um, there's a lot that goes into this. One of the reasons, you know, we're trying to get this substantially complete. We won't probably know our state aid and assessments till September. You know, honestly, that's what happened last year, I believe. We're just getting our renewals in for insurance, we're still getting the um. The insurance again for the Mayflower Municipal Health Group. And there's a lot of things, even the uh, short term interest on the uh. On the new school, we'll know in uh, in April whether there's, you know, what, what's happening with that, so it's. You know, sometimes it's, it's part fortune teller, you know, part utilizing the strategies you have, but again. You know, we've been told to treat this like a business, we've seen that the S and P Global. That uh, what we're doing has been working, it's generated, it's, it's kept us when COVID hit, we didn't know what we'd get for revenues. We had the ability to dip into the stabilization fund and then repay it, so I appreciate everybody, because the. The easiest thing in the world is what you saw in the past, when everything was just spent, so you had nothing and. When bad times came, you were not prepared for it, so.
What, I just have one more question, Mr. Sullivan, you said. Um, the, the next big expenditure in terms of bonding issue would be a police station, which I agree with you a hundred percent. Um, when would that funding be available, sir?
I believe that'd be in twenty twenty nine.
Okay. Thanks.
So that's what, you know, we start looking forward and planning, and obviously costs are just going to keep on going up. But you have to have the ability to pay for it. Uh, I don't see. Going to our residence for a debt exclusion for a police station while we've got the uh. The, the new school as well, and I know they're supportive of the police, but it's um, we're also trying to. Figure out how to make sure that they can stay. It's a tough time, costs have been. Been uh, been spiking, we know that, so.
Any other questions or comments at my board? Mrs. Sullivan, thank you very much. I'm sorry, Mr. Chadwick, go ahead. Oh, okay. Um, I just want to thank you for, again, for a very informative and concise presentation. To get this far on a balanced budget with the economic situation that we have is. Pretty fine, if you ask me. Um, so I, I very much appreciate it, as well as your, your department heads have done a really good job of doing. A lot. Under very tough circumstances, because the. Every department in this town, with the exception of the school department. Have lost many employees over the past ten years, and they are operating on. In many cases, skeleton crews, and I applaud them for being able to do it. But that is a fact, so. Mr. Bessie, did you have, did you find that stuff yet?
Yes, I have it.
Do you think it would be important to add that out, in terms of the support that the town gives to the schools?
I mean, I, I think it's, I, I think, yeah, I mean, I think. What really needs to be important, uh, that, you know, the, the. Taxpayers of the town need to understand is that, um, since, you know, Mr. Sullivan. taxpayers of the town need to understand is that, um, since, you know, Mister Sullivan has uh, taken over the, uh, the helm here in Wareham, uh, we've gone from a, a negative two percent net school spending, uh, to, I believe it was a hundred and, hundred and twenty four percent, uh, as of uh, FY, um, twenty three budget that uh, uh, we're looking at, so, um, in the terms of dollars and to ta, talk about dollars, um, you know, we spent last year, um, it was almost eight million dollars more than the state requires us to uh, in, invest into the school system. Um, and it's, it's tough, because, you know, education is very, very important. Um, but, you know, to um, uh, to Alan's point earlier, um, you know, when you're given an opportunity and you have some extra money that's given to you and you don't, necessarily budget it out, um, correctly, uh, now you're paying for, uh, you're paying for those things now with not having the, um, uh, ability to uh, continue, you know, paying forward on the increases. Um, so, uh, the net school spending uh, for FY twenty three, uh, that was budgeted, uh, required from the state was thirty four million, three hundred and twenty nine thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Um, we actually spent on the schools, um, forty two million, two hundred and ninety nine thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars, uh, which is a difference of seven million, nine hundred and seventy thousand and fifteen dollars. Um, so there hasn't been a lack of um, town support for our education. Uh, we've been giving and giving and giving every single year, and it's increased, um, you know, but, you know, you, you can't, you can't take money from where money isn't, um, and you can't keep going and, and asking, um, the, the people of the town to continue to, um, you know, increase in giving and, you know, raising taxes, and if you wanna talk about, you know, overrides and things like that, um, it can get very, um, it can become a very slippery slope, um, and I applaud Mister Sullivan and his uh, um, diligent work, um, in the budgets and trying to do everything he can, uh, for our school system. Um, so it's not for a lack of the town not investing, um, it's been a, a lack of, you know, mismanagement, um, of money, um, in the past, and we're paying for it here going forward, and, um, you know, hopefully, we'll find a way to, um, get through it. Um, but uh, it's not for a lack of Mister Sullivan doing everything he can, uh, to crunch those numbers and, and make it work, so, you know, it's definitely, um, not an easy thing, um, to, to work through, uh, especially when you're talking about, the school system. At the end of the day, it's one department of many that are in this town, um, and how much of, one budget can you invest into a singular department, um, you know, the, the school, if I just, if I have the number here, um, I think that, the, the amount that we spend on our budget, um, in the school, and correct me if I'm wrong, uh, is in the, forty nine percent of the budget. Um, roughly, I believe, is uh, dedicated to the education, um, in our town. Um, Mister Sullivan, you can probably correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, I don't have the actual numbers in front of me, but it's, uh, I think somewhere in that range, uh, of uh, of our total budget, uh, is that correct?
Yeah, when you bring in the benefits and such, it gets into the, to a much higher portion, almost two thirds of the budget.
So with, with all of the benefits, um, uh, so, it's, it's a lot higher, um, in total spending. Um, but in actual, just for the operation of the school system itself, um, in the district. Um, it's, I think, somewhere in the fifty percent range, fifty, fifty one percent, so it's, it's pretty high, not including, you know, annual investments made for, um, past teachers and all of those different things, so, um, there's definitely a commitment here in this town, um, to education, um, so I just want everybody to understand that, um, it's not for a, a lack of wanting to do, uh, what we can for education, it's, comes down to the, the dollars and cents, and if the money's not there, um, we can't just make it appear. Um, so, uh, once again, like I said, I applaud Mister Sullivan and his hard work, uh, and doing what he can to, um, take pennies from anywhere he can to, uh, help with uh, that uh, financial situation that we have on the school side.
Mister Bessie, could you send those to, those documents to Mister Sullivan, so he can post those along with what he's gonna be posting?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, any, any other questions or comments? Any further presentation, Mister Sullivan?
Uh, not on the budget.
Oh, okay, you wanna move on to something else?
Yeah, I just uh, thank you all for your, um, to your, for your support. And then just a bit of interesting news, uh, we've been speaking with the Mass Municipal Association, and I'm happy to say at the uh, in our town hall auditorium, which, we've also been revamping with the floors redone, the ceiling and the roof of this, this building, and March fifteenth, we'll be hosting uh, Mass Municipal Association Legislative Breakfast. So, I'm really excited about that, so. Shad that they're, they've worked and choose, chosen us.
Excellent, anything else, Mister Sullivan?
No, ma'am.
Okay, um, liaison initiative reports, boards comments, Mister Slaven.
I think uh, it's a little different than usual, uh, there's been a pretty large, um, amount of what I call uh, institutional knowledge and history, in a lot of different areas that I get involved with at the county level, obviously, at the regional level and at the state level. There seems to be a large group of people in the age group that are all coming to the point where they've decided to retire. It makes it difficult for us when you have uh, people that you use for contacts all the time, and all of a sudden they're gone, and then new people come in, and it's, it's hard to get back, it takes sometimes years. Uh, Mister Sullivan's gonna have to probably work pretty hard for a while to make new contacts that are disappearing, and uh, I hope people understand, this is not, you know, a matter of people just being upset and wanna go, it's just this age group has come in, and it's not just Wareham, it's every single town I know of, is having issues maintaining health, simply because people are at a, age point where they're just tired, they just, it's time, it's the best way to put it, so. Uh, I only ask that people be understanding and be uh, you know, just accept that it's gonna be hard for a while. You know, we're, we're doing the best we can, and it gets aggravating when someone comes in and yells at someone, at one of the desks or one of the offices, because they don't get what they want right away. And that's not the way we should be, thank you.
Thanks, Mister Bessie?
Um.
Liaison initiative, whatever.
I, I think for tonight, I'm good.
Thank you, Mister Chadwick.
I'm all good for tonight.
And I am as well. I don't believe we have any other business to come before us, am I correct?
Correct.
Then Mister Slaven?
As usual, motion to adjourn.
Is there some, motion made in second to adjourn and is not debatable, I will go for a roll call vote. And I wanna say thank you very much, gentlemen, was very well done meeting tonight, Mister Sullivan, thanks a, thanks a whole lot, Mister Slaven for adjournment.
Why not?
Mister Bessie?
Yes.
And Mister Chadwick?
Yes.
And myself, yes, we are adjourned, thank you very much, Wareham, and look forward tomorrow to a lot of the information that we gave you tonight, to be posted on the website, thank you and enjoy your evenings.